Good evening and welcome to the first regular city council meeting in a new year 2025. Make sure if you write checks, if you still write checks by the way, you get the right year in there. I didn't this morning. So would you call the roll please?
Councilmember Dennehy absent. Councilmember Maloney?
Here.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Here.
Councilmember Stein?
Here.
Councilmember Tracy?
Here.
Councilmember Worthington?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hemrick?
Here.
Mayor Troutman?
Here. Thank you. Would you join me on a pledge of allegiance please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, thank you all. So first on the agenda are citizens' requests to speak. We'd ask you, I'll call you out by name, you come up and give me your name and the lights are, when you start, it's three minutes for everybody. Three minutes and it's red, yellow, and I mean green, red, yellow and red. That's your three minutes. Okay? Pretty simple. So, the first one that we have is, and this is how they were submitted to us, Jessica Ari. I can see her sitting there. Come on up.
Good evening and happy first Monday of 2025. So, this evening, council members, I'm here tonight as a concerned citizen who cares deeply about our community and the small businesses that are the backbone of Canyon City. Homelessness is a pressing issue and I recognize that it's not one with simple solutions. However, I'm increasingly worried about how this issue is impacting our small business owners and their ability to thrive. Many of these businesses are already facing challenges and now they are also being forced to navigate difficult situations as they try to protect their property and provide safe welcoming spaces for their customers. I have two specific concerns I hope the council can address. I know generally we don't discuss it, there's no dialogue, however, I want to bring it to your attention. What steps are you and the members of the city taking to help the homeless in our community transition to larger cities where there are more resources available to meet their needs? We all want to see people get the help that they need, but Canyon City simply does not have the level of resources required nor the infrastructure to handle these challenges that larger cities provide. Larger cities with established shelters, mental health care and job training programs are better positioned to offer the long-term support and I would like to know what the city's doing to facilitate those connections with those larger, more metro-centered, non-rural communities. What is council doing to support small business owners who are trying to protect their livelihoods and their properties? Many business owners are feeling vulnerable, not only because of property damage, but also because of the perception that they may face backlash for taking reasonable steps to safeguard their businesses. Are there policies in place to ensure businesses and even homeowners can protect themselves while still addressing homelessness compassionately? I also want to highlight how this issue impacts not only businesses, but also the people they serve. When customers, especially trauma survivors, have to walk through groups of homeless individuals and their belongings to enter a business such as one offering health or mental health services, it can have a serious negative impact on their sense of safety and their healing. For somebody that's already struggling, this experience can be deeply unsettling and even re-traumatizing depending on the level of abuse that they may have endured or their experiences. I'm asking for this council to take a balanced approach. We need solutions that ensure small businesses feel supported and safe while also working to provide the homeless with pathways to better resources in cities that are equipped to handle them and to help them. Small businesses are the heart of Canyon City. Without our small businesses, we do not thrive. We must protect and empower them as we work together to address these challenges. I want to thank you for your time and for listening to the concerns of the community and I look forward to hearing your thoughts.
Thank you, Jessica.
Thirteen seconds to spare.
Do you have a copy of that we could have?
Copy of my phone?
You obviously, oh.
No.
Can I have your phone?
No, you don't want my phone.
Okay. If you have any capability that you can do that, could you get us a copy of that?
Yeah, of what I typed up and read to you?
Yeah, that'd be great.
I can do that. And do you want me to email it directly to you, all of you? You want me to put it on the city Facebook page? What would you like?
Um, yeah.
Okay.
That's the, the, the city clerk is the appropriate person to get it.
Okay.
That's Cindy. Okay?
Well, thank you guys.
Thank you, Jessica. Alyssa? Chloe? Is Alyssa here?
Right here.
Right here. Come on.
I have some printouts that I'd like to pass out to everybody if I can.
If you can give them to the clerk?
Good evening. My name's Alyssa Clu and I am both a new business owner and a commercial property owner in Canyon City. My business, located at the corner of Ninth and Main, provides trauma therapy services to first responders and their family members, an essential service to our community. I'm here tonight to share my experience with city officials, which has been deeply disheartening. When I started my business, I believed city, the city would be excited to see businesses like mine grow, businesses that serve and invest in the community. Instead, my experience has been one of unnecessary barriers, inequitable enforcement of rules and a lack of meaningful support. Over the years, my property has been significantly affected by the homelessness crisis. Homeless individuals have slept under my awnings in the stairwell to my basement, leaving behind human waste, trash and condoms. Some enter my building banging on the walls attempting to access private spaces. Despite upgrading my lights, cameras and other security measures, the issues have persisted. Section 8410 of Canyon City's municipal code defines nuisances as, among other things, any act or condition that is offensive to the senses or an obstruction to the free use of property so as to interfere with the comfortable enjoyment of life or property. The mess left on my property, including human waste and debris, clearly falls under this definition. The situation was visible to anyone driving, yet no one from the city intervened or offered assistance. It wasn't until I enclosed the basement stairwell to protect my property, employees and clients, that the city took notice, not, not with support, but with increased scrutiny from the building department. Now, I've been informed by the city building supervisor that any work that I do on my building requires collaboration of an architect. From a small business owner, this is a significant financial burden and a time-consuming requirement, requirement. To make matters worse, I recently learned that another local business owner and commercial property owner isn't being held to the same standards. This inconsistency is deeply troubling and raises serious concerns about the fairness and equity of the city's enforcement practices. Regulations should apply equally to all businesses. When I inquired about this and why I was being treated differently, I was dismissed and handed a single piece of paper with building codes and told that it would explain everything. Needless to say, the document only created more confusion, further confirming the dismissive and disinterested approach of the building department. Additionally, I question why someone overseeing Canyon City's building department resides outside the community. I also want to acknowledge that the police department always responds regarding the homelessness at my property. However, its clear enforcement isn't enough. I asked the members of the council, what would you do if you were in my position? How would you feel as a built, as a business owner trying to contribute to the community while facing the challenges with little meaningful support? I address, to address these issues and create better environment for all, I suggest ensuring regulations are applied fairly and consistently to all businesses, developing solutions to connect to the homeless population to, with resources in larger cities and fostering a culture of collaboration and support with local businesses. I'm not asking for special treatment, only for fair and equitable treatment for all business owners. Additionally, I'm asking the city to acknowledge that protecting my property from conditions deemed a nuisance under the municipal code is not only my right, but also my responsibility. Instead of being met with support for addressing these nuisances, I have faced obstacles and inconsistent enforcement, which has only added to my challenges. The building department is part of the Community Vitality Department, whose goals is to improve the quality of life in our community and sustain long-term economic vitality. The department also states it provides resources to facilitate public understanding of building processes. However, in my experience, this mission has not been upheld. The lack of clarity, consistency and cooperation in working with local businesses like mine is concerning and makes it harder for small businesses to succeed. Thank you.
Could we also get a copy of that from you? Do you mind? And there was something else was being passed out? Okay. Would give us time to look at it and whatever you passed out? Okay, thank you. The next one is Justin Kurth. Would you come forward please, Justin?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. My name's Justin Kurth. I'm the regional director for Congresswoman Brittany Pedersen of the 7th Congressional District. This evening, I wanted to bring to the council's attention and members of the public that this weekend, the president signed the Thomas, let me make sure I get this right, the Thomas R. Carper Water Resources Development Act of 2024, or WERDA for short, which included three provisions led by Representative Pedersen to improve Colorado's water infrastructure. Basically, it's, it's an enormous first step for the authorization of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to invest $50 million to reconnect the John Griffin Regional Park to the Arkansas River ecosystem. It would ensure the community has access to water for years to come and her office, her and her and, and her office have worked hand-in-hand with the Canyon City leaders after hearing from them about the need for federal support to boost water storage. So I also want to extend a thanks to Water Superintendent Travis Payne in the back and Public Works Director Leo Evans. Thank you both for the work you've been doing on, on this, up to this point. We're, we're halfway there, but it's, but I don't want to say we're on the downhill slope. The authorization is what I just got done sharing with you, that, that has been completed. That's what was signed by the president and that's what was put forward by Representative Pedersen. But an authorization is a budgeted item and so next comes the spending, the appropriation. So, our next big step, of course, is appropriation, which we will seek this year and we look forward to seeing this congress prioritize projects like this to bring tax dollars back home to rural Colorado. That's it.
Thank, thank you, Justin. So we had, I failed to say, John, did you want to make some comments?
Uh, well, just perhaps a question, Justin. The, so the appropriations committee will be meeting in the coming months to make some of these decisions. Will you keep us informed as to when those are and?
Yes.
Whether there's anything that, that people in this county, elected officials or others might be able to do, including even traveling back to Washington DC to, for testimony?
I will make sure you're aware.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Emily?
Thanks. Thanks also to Justin for that report. Good to hear. I, I did want to make a couple of really brief comments in regard to the homelessness issue, one, one being that council members have received a summary from staff of the activities going on regarding the property at Ninth and Main. So I just want you to know that we have information about that. And then I also wanted to say that we actually in Canyon City have some pretty good resources for homeless folks and we don't, I don't think, I'm not an attorney, do we have an attorney here tonight?
No.
Oh, okay. I don't think we have the right to tell people where they can live, just like no one can tell me where I can live. We don't have the right to bust people out of Canyon City, so to speak. We do have a coalition of folks, including Loews and Fishes and other agencies that provide a lot of services to homeless folks and one of the things that they do is they keep account and they've been doing this since 2019. The good news is, and I don't mean to minimize issues at all by saying this, but the good news is that our numbers are continuing to decline from when they started the unduplicated count in 2019. Even comparing December last month to January of 2024, a year ago, our numbers are significantly down. So hopefully that's good news for the community and we do get more detailed reports even than that in regard to the services that are provided, the work that's done to house homeless people and to provide mental health services, substance abuse services and so forth. So there, there is a lot going on, but that again, does not take away from the issues that businesses are dealing with and the city does want to work with businesses to assist in those situations. That's all.
Thank you, Emily. Do you have, did you have, do we, there are email addresses or addresses that we can contact?
Yeah.
At yours. Okay. So if you have other questions, it would be appropriate to go through our city clerk and then disseminate from there. Okay. And thank you for coming.
I have Mrs. Clu's email address as well.
Again, thank you again. Does any city council have any announcements or board updates or anything like that? John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, and I, I want to also say something about the, our two, our, the two first, the first two speakers that we had here tonight. This has been, this is, these issues are not new to council. Council has struggled with them. I, I hear you. I hear about your problems and for sure, you know, it, it is, it's my intention as a council member to try and resolve these to the extent that we can. There's been a lot of work, a lot of discussion, a lot of nonprofit organizations that are involved in this undertaking and even, you know, changes to our police department. We've made several changes to our police department over the years to try and deal with this problem because it is a problem that affects our citizens and I just wanted you to know that this is not a new subject and that it is, but it is very intractable and very hard to, to find some resolution that satisfies everybody. But just know that we're, we're thinking about that. Now, on, as far as the, the announcements, I do have a sad announcement tonight, council members. I'm not going to be asking anybody to show up to me, with me for KRLN Wednesday morning, I'm sorry to say. Thank you.
That, that's it? Okay. Well, Wednesday, tomorrow night, we have the reveal of the project, the street project, Tuesday, Tuesday. Isn't that tomorrow?
It is. You said Wednesday though.
Would I say Wednesday?
Yes.
I just want to see if you were listening. Sorry. Tuesday, it's been a long day. Tuesday at five to seven here, we'll have the reveal and the discussion of what is going to occur on the project, which is a long-time project that has been going on, that we're going to start and have it done in a hundred days. And that is Third Street to First Street. That, that has been in the works for a very long period of time, but that we'll have tomorrow. And then Wednesday, we have Urban Renewal Authority at five o'clock and then we have General Government at six. Is that right? Am I right? That's Wednesday.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. This is my support crew here. Old guys like me need that. So, anything else? Yes, Amy. Oh, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Troutman. Um, Mayor Pro Tim Hemrick, could you remind folks when the Water Committee meets? I think that this month we'll be talking about water rate classes and that might be something that's of general interest to our community beyond just the, the normal stalwarts of the Water Committee meeting. Thanks.
It's, yes. It will be the 29th of January here in these chambers at two o'clock.
Okay. Thank you, Amy. So, I'd ask the city administrator to review the agenda and the consent agenda items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Item 6A is to approve the minutes for the regular city council meeting on December 16th, the vision meeting on December 18th, the special board recognition meeting December 12th, uh, meeting on December 14th and the executive session meeting on December 16th. 6B authorizes the mayor to accept a resignation and appointment of members for the library and museum board. 6C authorizes the mayor to sign a certified local government 2025 grant application. 6D authorizes the mayor to sign a water services agreement for 351 Columbine. 6E awards bid 01-25 Main Street Reconstruction and Streetscape to Pyramid Construction in an amount not to exceed $3,035,787.06. 6F awards bid 2-25 Aggregate Materials to Wholesome, WCR, Inc. 6G awards bid 3-25 Hot Mix Asphalt to be awarded to Martin Marietta and Old Castle SW Group. 6H awards bid 4-25 Concrete Flow Fill to Langston Concrete in an amount not to exceed $121,000. 6I awards bid 5-25 Traffic Control Signs to Roadside Supplies LLC in an amount not to exceed $50,000. 6J awards bid 6-23 Extension of Aluminum Sulfate Purchase to Chemtrade in an amount not to exceed $100,000. 6K awards bid 12-25 Soul Source Purchase of Water Meters to Ferguson in an amount not to exceed $50,000. 6L awards bid 13-25 Chlorine Purchase to PVSDX in an amount not to exceed $60,000. 6M awards bid 16-22 Extension of Water Stock Parts to Corin, Maine in not to exceed $170,000. 6N authorizes the purchase of 530 Royal Gorge Boulevard in an amount not to exceed $137,500. 6O ratifies cash dispersments. 6P ratifies P-card dispersments. And 6Q is to receive and file cash dispersments.
Are there any additions, corrections or questions? Amy?
Thank you, Mayor Troutman. I have several questions related to 6E, the award of the Main Street Reconstruction and Streetscape. I know that we have, we as council has, have received a lot of questions and concerns about it and I think it would likely behoove us to talk about it in a little bit more detail. Happy to do that now. We're happy to remove it from the consent agenda, whatever council or the mayor's preference may be.
The, the discussion of the nuts and bolts, what's within that bid or what will be happening or what?
The timeline, I think, in particular, was of concern to many of the merchants on Main Street as well as folks who are concerned about Blossom Festival and how long the project will last, when it will last, how it will be structured to ensure that the merchants on Main Street's businesses are impacted as little as possible and what provisions we have in the contract to ensure that it is concluded before the blossom parade and before tourist season really kicks off.
I don't know if we need to pull it off the budget. Let's have a discussion of that right now. I see Leo is standing there. Would you like to come up and explain that?
Certainly. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Thank you for having me. In terms of the schedule, what we would be looking at if this were awarded today is staff would issue a notice of award tomorrow to the contractor. They have 10 days to return all their bonds, insurance, the actual contracts back to us. Once we have that and it's accepted, we issue a notice to proceed. The, so say it were to go, we'd be looking at a notice to proceed no later than January 17th. The original contract as bid was based on a 120-day schedule. So January 17th plus 120 days is roughly the third week of May. So prior to Memorial Day, not prior to Blossom Fest. We did include provisions in the contract that they have to expedite the work from second to fourth, earlier in the contract, to have that ready for the blossom parade. But if the work lagged on, say, the First Street portion of the work or in the 100 block of Main Street, that would be not as detrimental to Blossom Fest and there is a lot of work to get done in a short time. We met with our contractor last week. While it's not contractually required of them, their schedule that they bid the project on is based on a 100-day completion, as the mayor mentioned, which would have the project completed ahead of Blossom Festival and that is their intention. So, and then in terms of keeping business, keeping the road open and business access, the road would be constructed half at a time. So I believe the intent would be that the south half of the road would be built first. So the north half of the road and the angle parking on the north side would remain open during that entire stage. And then once that south half is done through the bottom layer of asphalt, we would switch, put the traffic on the south half of the road and parking on the south half of the road and build the north half of the road at that time.
Would that be done block by block or would the entirety of the road be shut?
The entire stretch at once.
How long would it be shut for?
How long would each be shut for? The south half will take a little longer. There is some storm pipe and things underground. We don't have a set contract date for those timelines. All we have is 120-day completion for the entire project. I would estimate there's roughly two and a half months of work on the south side and a month and a half on the north side. So January, mid-January to first part of April and then first part of April to mid-May for the other part, if it took the full 120 days. If it were compressed into 100 days, it's probably more like 60 days for the south half, 40 days for the north half.
And what provisions do we have in the contract to ensure timely completion? I know that it would be detrimental to our Main Street businesses if this construction project in particular lagged.
Yeah.
Into tourist season.
We have our standard contract language. So we have liquidated damages that would be assessed for any days that run over this. Those are all always subject to, if there's additional work that has to be added that they couldn't have anticipated, they can earn extra days for things like that. But the liquidated damages would be the big negator, I guess, or detriment to being late on the contract. Those are monetary damages paid to the city if the contract goes longer than anticipated.
And is there a reason why we're doing it now as opposed to say after Labor Day later this year?
Um, this is when we had the project ready for bid. So it could certainly be delayed till next year or next fall if that's what we choose. We would have to rebid the project. Those pricing, those bids would not be available, but I mean, there's no reason other than this is when it was ready. This was about the absolute latest. We felt that we could get it out to bid and awarded and have it completed in time.
Okay. It's just, I always want to make sure that we're, and I know council feels similarly, that we're minimizing road closures on Main Street during tourist season and even during the shoulder season when we can. And it, it just seems like November, December, January, February are more of the sweet spot for, for that type of work to be done. So I was just hoping to get further clarification as to why we're starting it now as opposed to during that more optimal window.
I think you run into some challenges even if you're looking at the fall after Labor Day. You, you still have Christmas shopping that happens down, not necessarily that stretch, but you know, that there are impacts for that as well.
Emily?
Thanks. I, I first want to say I'm, I'm really happy to see this getting started myself. I, I remember, I think I said this maybe when I was newer on council several years ago, that just looking at the parts of Main Street that have not yet been completed, particularly that west end, reminds me of my visit many years ago to Berlin and comparing West Berlin to East Berlin. I mean, it really is a stark contrast and I think that these improvements will really help. Yeah, it's, it's tough to go through the actual construction part of it. But, and speaking of that, I assume that doing the south half then the north half of the street in that stretch, that the city will make an effort to provide good signage for pedestrians to be able to access businesses on the south side when that's being constructed and vice versa.
Yes.
I don't, you might say a little more about how that will work.
Yeah. Sorry, I didn't mention that. We will have to maintain pedestrian crosswalks throughout the corridor just to keep ADA compliance and to your point, keep access to all the south side businesses through there.
And maybe, I don't know what's And maybe, I don't know what signage might be needed, but just give some consideration, making sure that folks know that those businesses aren't going to be closed during that time, that they will be accessible, and to kind of show people how to do that if they need to.
Jerry?
Oh, thanks, Mayor. Will the sidewalks be open on that whole stretch during this construction, or will sidewalks be blocked off as well?
Sidewalks will be mostly open during this. Work we, we take from the bricks out towards the street kind of get removed, but the stuff that's behind the bricks, the sidewalk along the storefront, stays largely intact. We do have to remove some of it if there's a water service line that needs to be replaced, or, you know, small little pieces, but largely that sidewalk all stays in place.
Okay. This might be a good opportunity for our, our community to realize there is parking on the side streets as well, so. As long as they can park on the side streets and walk to the businesses, that, that would be important, yeah.
Yeah. I didn't mention, we'll, we'll likely probably be doing some work at the clock tower site to stripe that and make that a little more accessible and usable, add some signage to encourage parking there. And we've talked about possibly using the new method site as well for some parking on the north side of the street. Still have to figure out how to get people in and out of there, and it's not a paved surface yet if you've been passed, but it probably would be usable for parking with a little bit of work.
Okay. Any other questions of council?
Thanks, Leo.
You're welcome.
Have we answered all the questions? You still want to leave it on the agenda, or have we discussed it enough? Very quiet.
Mr. Mayor, tomorrow's meeting, is this going to address all of these questions with the community tomorrow? It's an open house kind of thing.
Yeah, open house, talking about logistics, you know, Leo.
Yeah, I think our intent is really to meet one-on-one with as many of the business owners as we can that can make it. We've, we've had a few that can't make it. We're going to set up alternates with them, just to really hear what their specific concerns are. I mean, we can kind of imagine what they are, but sometimes they have a different perspective or different needs that we're not thinking about. So just trying to work through all those little details and get out ahead of them, make sure they're well aware of the schedule and kind of the, the conflicts that are going to come up during the construction. But yeah, it is open to any member of the public, but we hand-delivered invitations to everybody that's on that corridor within the limits.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? Well, if not, then I would ask for a motion of council to approve the consent agenda. Emily?
Thanks. I, I'll just make a quick comment and then a motion also, just to point out that on items O and P in regard to ratifying cash dispersments and ratifying purchase card dispersments, that some of that is a little bit related to our change in our financial management system, and some of it is just, you know, the simple fact that when purchase card, purchases are made, that those are purchases that are approved in the budget and so forth, and then, in a sense, ratified by council when it appears on our agenda. And with that, I'll move for approval of the agenda and consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Second, Kathy, thank you. Any discussion on that motion, any questions? Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Maloney?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Nay.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Potim Hamrick?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And then, the long-awaited and anticipated, we would invite the city administrator to report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. You have the written report as presented. A couple of items that didn't make it into the reports, things that, just kind of got some updates today. First, we received word today that we're going to be receiving a grant award for rehabilitation of the First Street Bridge in the amount of eight hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. So we, we do our bridge inspections. We identified some items that needed to be fixed or refurbished or rehabilitated, and received word that we'll be receiving that money from CDOT. We have about four years to use those funds. The Parks Building is moving along quite nicely. The erection of the building should be complete by Friday, and framing and HVAC subcontractors will arrive on Monday. And then, just a reminder that our next city council meeting, there's a holiday on that Monday, so the next city council meeting will be January twenty-first, which is a Tuesday.
So you are trying to confuse me between ways?
I, I try not to.
That's easy to do. Amy?
Thank you, Mayor Troutman. One quick question for you, Administrator Stevens. I was wondering, either tonight or perhaps at the next council meeting, I know that there's been conversation over the past couple of years and exploration of different software that our police department could use with regard to customer service satisfaction after encounters, and I'm wondering if we could get an update on where, where that might be. Thanks.
You know, the vision meeting on the twenty-second, the PD will be presenting, so I can ask them to include an update then.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Amy. Anyone else? Any questions? I thought you were going to grill our city administrator, darn it. Just kidding. All right.
I can ask more.
You, you had a good start. Then I would like to open a public hearing this evening. It's the new liquor license for retail fermented malt beverage and wine for Maverick at fifty-four thirty-one, fifty-four thirty-one, that's the, the store, located at one oh five Latigo Lane, and I'd like to open the public hearing at this time. I'd ask the city clerk to report.
Maverick got all of their paperwork in. The appropriate state forms and fees have been submitted. The diagram of the premises meets the filing requirements, and the applicant has possession of the premises, even though it's not fully ready yet, but it will be shortly, and holds a current sales tax license, and they're in good standing with the Secretary of State, and currently, the state has already approved them. They have a master file with the state, which greatly helps on, on these situations because most information is already stored, and we have a representative here to speak with you guys tonight.
Okay, we have, is it, are you Christopher Burton?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I just wanted to come, make an appearance. We haven't operated here in, in your fine city yet, and just wanted to be able to answer any questions that you guys might have for us about Maverick, how we do business, or how we are responsible corporate citizen within the community to ensure that we're responsible age-restricted sellers of, of, of beer and alcohol within your...
Any questions of Christopher? Emily?
Thanks, and, and thanks for being here. Do we know yet when the business will open, or roughly?
Yeah, roughly it'd be the April timeframe, so right now, my development report can change a little bit through construction, but right now, I'm tracking an April eleventh turnover for construction, so a little, couple of days past that.
So wanting to get the liquor license all done and taken care of and in place before we even get close to that opening day, I guess.
Yep.
And then, do you have a, do you know yet who the manager of the location will be?
I have a candidate for it, an internal candidate. It's in a flex role right now. She's been with us for about nine months, working in other areas as we develop some stores here locally between Canyon City and Pueblo. So not officially yet, but I, yes, I have somebody in mind for it.
And, and can you say a little bit about what the company does with the many locations that you have? What you do to make sure that managers and employees understand what they have to enforce in regard to liquor laws for the beverages that you'll be selling?
Yeah, absolutely, so. Leo, you're a lot taller than me. So Maverick family-owned company operates eight hundred stores nationally, a little over eight hundred stores nationally. We take the responsible sales and, and corporate citizenry very, very, very seriously. Some of the stuff that we have in place for that, so one is through our registers. Anytime an age-restricted product is sold, there's a non-bypassable screen that pops up, and we have a hundred percent ID scan requirement in stores, so we have to be able to scan an ID. There is an override for just active-duty military. We're working on a technology piece for that, so active-duty militaries' IDs do not have those QR codes or can't slide through a register on there, so there is an override for that. All associates go through three different online training modules before they're allowed to work on a register. There are techniques of alcohol management and other age-restricted pieces in there. Those associates are required to complete those before they're even allowed to step behind the registers in there. And then, also on top of that, we participate at our own expense in the bars program to do fake stings all the time so that we can just make sure that we're being as compliant as possible. Happy to report that since we started doing that about eight months ago, my district's one hundred percent green on every bars ID check on there, so.
Okay, and one more question that I have. When you do have a violation at any of your locations, do you have a certain protocol that you then follow with employees, or what do you do in order to make sure that doesn't happen again?
Yes, absolutely. So if somebody fails a alcohol or tobacco sting on an age-restricted product, they're terminated immediately.
And any other training that's provided to just kind of reinforce, or?
In those instances, if somebody does fail a sting, that person gets terminated, their, their position's terminated with the company. Because we have so many resources out there to prevent those types of actions, it's almost got to be fraudulent for them to do that. The manager, the, the management team of that location will also have to go back and complete all those trainings again, get signed off on by the district supervisor, and then the district supervisor will review the entire team's legal compliance. WBTs on every single visit, which is roughly weekly.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Emily. Amy?
My box is having significant issues. Apologies. I was just curious, I think you had mentioned that Maverick likes to invest in the community and give back. How does that typically happen, and how do you see that happening here in Canyon City?
Yeah, so for sure. Very philanthropic organization. I don't know if you guys follow us or have seen some of the headline things out there. Earlier last year, we gave away a million dollars to the Denver Food Bank. We also, you know, listen to the community concerns around homelessness or the unsheltered in there. All the food that we can't sell, we have certain shelf lives for quality, but that food is still absolutely a hundred percent good to eat, so we local, we partner with local food banks for them. All the food that we can't sell to go to those local food banks while it's still safe for people to eat and maybe just doesn't meet our quality standards in there. Something else that I'm really excited about that is a nuisance I've been under the Maverick banner, coming from the Come and Go banner. I was talking to you guys about that acquisition earlier, the year before last. But each store director is also given a budget for being able to pick a charity or pick a reasonable cause within their, within their community, within their, like, the immediate operations of the store so that they can contribute to those, and we also do some stuff through Feeding America and some philanthropy through that. The Maglet family, the owner of FJ Management, which is our parent company, super philanthropic in those things. We have a bunch of stuff for family members and actually even, like, local citizens, where we'll put people through college for free. It used to just be Utah in twenty twenty-three. In twenty twenty-four, we moved that to five different states to include the state of Colorado.
That's awesome. Thank you so much for sharing that. I think one other thing I'd like to ask is that there, there are frequent memes and jokes on our local Facebook pages about how we're going to have yet another gas station here in Canyon City or the Canyon City greater area, and I was wondering if you could shed a little light on how did Maverick decide that this was a good business investment and why are we getting another gas station here? Thanks.
For sure. So I'll, I'll do what I can. I'm not on the site selection committee on the real estate. What I'll say is that site was originally purchased by Come and Go and was going to be built out as a Come and Go. Come and Go just loves Colorado. We've been expanding down here for, you know, the greater part of twenty years. Awesome community. We want to, as an organization under both banners, just wanted to provide energy to people that are going about their day in small communities mostly. Almost all of the stores that we operate are in, outside of, like, Denver and Salt Lake City, are almost all rural. Adventures first stop. I couldn't think of a better city probably to operate in than Canyon City. I mean, honestly, it's the gateway to the Rockies here. You have the gorge right up the street, you've got the railroads, mountains are here. Just so much going on in here. How can you be in an outdoor adventure-based company and not have a site in Canyon City, Colorado?
Thank you.
Thank you. How many employees will you have?
I'm sorry, what was that?
How many employees will you have?
It'll depend a little bit upon, upon the volume of the store, so we'll start out with about fifteen. So there's a general manager, there's seven different positions in the store that will be leadership-oriented. So each store has a store director, then we have a dedicated food manager. If you've been into our locations, you notice we have, like, a fresh food program that is all made in-store. It's not like, not to speak poorly about any other businesses, seven-eleven, a lot of them pipe this food that's been warehoused or packaged in a warehouse into their food, and that's their food offering. All of our pizzas, all of our, like, salads, all of our hot chicken sandwiches, burgers, all that stuff's cooked on-site. So we have a dedicated food team to that, and then an assistant manager on there, and then there's lead positions on both sides to make sure that we have leadership coverage there all the time. If we're operating a twenty-four-seven business, we should have leadership there twenty-four-seven as well. So back to that, the average store, I would probably say, across the company is about eighteen employees. We'll probably start with fifteen or so and then see where that business takes us. We have stores that operate with upwards of thirty, though, just depending on the volume that they do.
Thank you, Christopher. Any other questions of Christopher? Well, welcome to Canyon City.
Thanks for having us.
You did a really good Chamber of Commerce speech there. Thank you for that. So thank you. So are there no more questions from council? Is there any in the public would like to come and speak? Apparently not. Again, thank you. So at this time, I would go ahead and close the public meeting, and I would ask for a motion and a second. From council. Oh, Kathy?
Kathy, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the liquor license for Maverick and located on Latigo Lane. Second.
Motion made in second. A discussion on that motion? John? Okay, would you call the roll then?
Councilmember Maloney?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Potim Hamrick?
Aye.
Okay, then in your agenda, we had, thank you, Christopher.
Thank you.
And so, we'll be out there for some kind of fresh peach, and if you have any stale Hershey chocolate bars, you know, they're just saying. If they're outdated.
I'm, I'm going to swing by and bring you guys some proprietary chocolate.
Oh, I don't know if we can, we can accept that, but just in case.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christopher. Okay, so in your, your minutes, number ten has been moved to number nine because our city clerk sought to have two roll calls this, this time, and we're not, wait, oh, it's just on mine. Okay, forget, forget I said that. I'm not having, anyway. All right, so we have a second reading and adoption by title only of ordinance ten, series twenty twenty-four, entitled "An Ordinance of the City of Canyon City, Colorado Appropriating Additional Sums of Money to Defray Expenses in Excess of Amounts Budgeted for the City of Canyon City, Colorado for the twenty twenty-four budget year," and I'd ask the administrator to comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a second reading. We've received no additional public comments, and staff would recommend approving on second reading. As I mentioned in my administrator report, we will have one more amendment that will be coming forward for the twenty twenty-four budget year.
Okay, Emily?
I have a motion, if you're ready for that.
Well, yeah, well, yeah. Well, first of all, are there any other questions for the administrator? Thank you. Go ahead, Emily, sorry.
Okay. I move for approval of ordinance number ten, series of twenty twenty-four on second reading.
I'll second. I heard, I heard Amy first. All right, we're going to let Amy have, we're going to let Amy have that one. Okay, any discussion? Any discussion on that motion this time? Hearing none, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Maloney?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Potim Hamrick?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And B, introduction and adoption by title only of resolution, title only of Resolution One, series twenty twenty-five, entitled "A Resolution Designation, Designation, Resolution Design, A Resolution Designating the Public Place for Posting Notices Pursuant to CRS twenty-four dash six dash four oh two two, parentheses, C." And I'd ask the city administrator to discuss that.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. This is- Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. This is a housekeeping item. It's usually numbered, the first resolution every year, designating our posting place for all of our meetings, and that is the website and upstairs in City Hall. And we, staff would ask that council approve it on the one and only reading.
Are there any questions of the administrator on that? I saw something that I think maybe Amy you'd mentioned. Are we going to stay with...
It's a very exciting new development that we should give kudos to our IT department about. CanyonCity.gov is up and running, but given that we'll be operating both sites in parallel and are not fully advertising CanyonCity.gov yet, I think it makes sense to stay with CanyonCity.org for this year, but in 2026, we should be able to update the official place to CanyonCity.gov.
So for the next year, we'll have org.org and then running simultaneously with .gov.
They will both lead to the same place for 2025.
Okay.
And maybe into the future, but we have transition plans to start moving all of our collateral to the .gov address.
Okay. Then, there's another question. Do we post in City Hall? I thought we did. We have a poster.
It's just not our official place.
Right, this is official. Good. Any other questions? Then I would call for a motion and a second.
Mayor, I move that we approve on first reading a resolution number one, Designating the Public Place for Posting Notices Pursuant to CRS 24-6-402-2c.
Thank you, Andrea. Have a second?
Second.
Amy got another second. Good. Thank you. Are there any discussions on that motion? Could you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Maloney?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
Okay, then finally, in executive session, this is, executive session is to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, develop a strategy for negotiations, and instruct negotiators regarding Fremont Center for the Arts, FCA. And I would have asked for a motion on that. Do we need a motion to, do we need a motion to go into executive session?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, John.
I move that city council enter into executive sessions for the following purposes. Executive session to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, develop a strategy for negotiations, and to instruct negotiators regarding Fremont Center for the Arts pursuant to CRS 24-6-402-4e. Second.
Second. Thank you, Kathy. Any discussion on that motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Maloney?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
Well, thank you all. We will now adjourn to the empty room for executive session.